Mayor Berry, same for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call please.
Commissioner Case, Commissioner Garvelia, Commissioner Cochran, Commissioner Story, Mayor Massersohn.
Yes.
Reading for a little bit, Commissioner Case?
Um, everything else that's been going on, I forgot that. The continued meeting?
No.
I didn't even think about that.
I didn't either.
Honestly, they're probably typed, Damien probably typed them, but we'll have to do them at the next meeting because I did not.
Okay, I just, in case there was any questions, I just wanted to make sure that we.
I forgot we had a system right here.
So, I've read through the minutes from the regular council meeting on April 9th. I see no additions, any edits, anything of that nature. So I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th meeting as presented.
Don't sleep, I can't hear.
I know you can't. Commissioner Case, Commissioner Garvelia, Commissioner Cochran, Commissioner Story, Mayor Massersohn.
Yes, and we'll have the continued minutes on the next council meeting. All we did was pay bills, there was nothing exciting except we paid bills.
So the property report, Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes, I had no purchase orders. I did lots of twin outs and get this front end for the ants. And I had a discussion with Craig about the bathrooms at Capital Park. And we went over some items that needs to be done. We think it's gonna take probably maybe $2,000 to do.
Two thousand or twenty thousand?
No, two thousand.
Just two thousand? That would be exciting.
Yeah. Just insulating some of those, those water lines and things like that. And stools and all that, those stuff doesn't need to be taken care of. All those, those things are relatively new. So anyways, just to do renovations of that. I'd like to make a motion that we approve spending that amount of money.
$2,000, Kathy?
Yes.
Great.
I'll say it.
Wait, wait, no, sorry, Doug.
Look at the budget, because I think we put ten in the budget for that. And now that's turned high.
Was that just for the bathroom or is that for Capital Park?
No, that was for the bathrooms, including the painting, including the repair, and then also putting a portable building outside for the garden club.
Okay, so you included all of that.
Yeah, I was gonna include all that, to move them out of that storeroom so that we don't have to worry about them plumbing and breaking on their rent in there.
I think it's under CI. It's like a line capital. So we have, so this will be an expenditure for the next fiscal year. We're not gonna get this quarter down on eight days. So this is a 24, 25 problem that we're rapidly approaching too. So we've got $10,000 in the budget for Capital Park. I think last year it was a little bit higher, but I think there were some unknowns about that and Malkovich Park. So this is kind of some reallocated money from the fire department group and the Lake Hamilton, Lake Ben, Dam Road project. For renovations for Capital Park, not just the restaurant. This is all renovations, there's $10,000 budgeted for that. So how about we just make a motion to do restaurant renovations out of the budget, whatever.
That's probably, because I think two thousand is probably a little bit low.
So, enough to two thousand.
So we'll do the two thousand, I just, I was wanting to make sure that we had it budgeted in there and then if we have to come back.
If there's more, we have more than one.
Yeah.
Okay, make sure you have enough to work with, I don't want you to have to, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't want to hear your thunder.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Massersohn?
Yes. Good, thank you. Streets Public Affairs?
I have no purchase orders, not that I'm aware of. I do have one pool adjustment, lacy smothers, 1103 South Wiplager. Make a motion to approve that, sure adjustment.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Massersohn?
Yes.
And divided islands, that's all we have in that, Mayor.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Well, health and safety, story.
I don't have anything, I've got an update from the, uh, uh, from the police and fire commissioners. I mean.
She is.
Mayor Board.
Mayor Board. Zachary Andrews has passed all his tests. So we're ready to send him to the academy, I think sometime in May.
Or?
Huh?
He starts officially with us May 4th, I believe.
Yeah, when we send him to the academy.
So that's, he's the one.
So that's all I got. And we've got an engine that's locked up. I suppose it's, it's been smoking like heck, so we've had it towed off to Bellwell. So it's on the crap, so hopefully we can get the other mini pumper back here to take up the slack on it, so. And that's all I got.
One question, we have two retiring, one in police and one in fire, they both, what are their retirement dates?
Jeff's got six, I think Jeff's got six days left.
Was it one in police and one in fire?
Jeff's got six days?
I think six, yes.
It's about the same time.
They might have been both hired, both hired at the same.
That's what, that's what I kept thinking, but I wouldn't for sure.
I think the, is, Earthall is pretty close to that time too.
I was thinking May 12th.
May 12th fits with both of them though, so I'm thinking they may have been hired at the same meeting or?
Jeff told me yesterday he had six, six years.
He said Saturday.
So we have, yes, we have two retiring, one from each within the next month.
Yeah. Because do you have an update on when they're planning on retrieving or new?
I talked to Shane today, he didn't know what to do, he's kinda leaving it up to you about flying two of them out. Last thing I heard, you don't wanna pay for two, you wanna pay for one. That's a long drive for one person to drive, which I would drive it, but that's me. But for safety reasons, I think you need to send two out there, so.
Yeah, and when I talked to, I talked to either Jeff or Eric on Saturday at the fish fry. And they've tried some fly, they've found some fairly cheap flights out there. I'm, I just don't want it to be.
I think it's southwestern, two can fly out there, I think he said, for $500. That's, that's, I know a guy that's wife works and, you know, maybe he can get a vehicle.
It's the hotel industry, not the airline industry. Why you help with the airline industry, I would.
They'll have to say there's some point to get back.
I mean, I was thinking, when I was going to IML this past fall before we, before I did withdraw, staying on my own diner at the high.
A hurler diner.
It's gonna be substantially cheaper.
We don't need anybody that stepped forward to go, you know, yet, so.
Someone will be voluntold at some point.
I'd say.
I just heard, I just heard Don say he'd be willing to drive it.
That's what I heard.
We'll fly him out.
I don't care to go, I told Shane today I would go if, if nobody else wanted to go, I don't care, I like driving.
I'm not, I'm much of a flyer.
Wait, that's all right.
Mayor didn't drive it back, keep it in mind, alright, council finance? You got a good list tonight.
Yeah. A lot of times fun stuff. Seven A, a payroll, it's high. Another statement, it's got the Eclipse Festival on there, we had a lot of overtime on there. So going forward, we will, that was a little bit of a discussion this afternoon in our administrative meeting. We will, everyone was kind of reminded to keep an eye on stuff like that. Use, use some good gauges and be good stewards of the taxpayer's money. But anyway, total payroll of $113,574.24, with $86,976.71 out of the general, and $26,606.53 out of the water and sewer fund. Motion to approve that as presented.
Second.
Commissioner Case?
Yep.
Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, next item, no bills, we did that last week, that was fun too. Nothing proceed. Item D, seven D, it's the approval of the budget. We had a budget hearing, I told you the only addendums that I have were the ones that I mentioned. There was no other addendums outside of those. So with those changes in mind, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 24.
Good question, because I didn't bring it down.
It was the last one.
Yeah, I'll have to get you that number. I'll have to get you that number.
I make a motion that we approve whatever ordinance number we need that will accompany this budget with the addendums that we talked about during the year. Well, that's suffice. That was suffice. Glad, because I'm not changing it.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
I can't hear, oh, sorry.
Are you, yes?
Yes.
I can't hear a message.
I know. Yes. I know, if I don't turn around, the way I can't hear.
Yelling.
Do you, do you, do you want me to handle E or do you wanna handle the ordinance? He needs to, the ordinance on A, Mayor, you will need to make that request for a motion to, for your point.
To write that, yeah, to approve the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. So with E, just some, some general discussion. We have narrowed down to a final candidate for our treasurer to replace Lisa. It was as vetted, as intense as a process as we could do for hiring. I was a big fan of the way we went about things. We had several applicants that were good. None of them that came to the table had the technical training that we really wanted out of the gate that our current treasurer possesses. But again, not ever, there's no degree program for governmental accounting or municipal treasurers. So this is very much a learned trade, not a, not a, not one that you're taught in school. Went through two rounds of interviews and have come to, to the conclusion of who we're gonna hire. I'll let the mayor handle that when we get down to nine.
Sure.
But I, do any of you have any other questions? I sat through both rounds of interviews. Chris did a good job leading both, I mean, I was involved, wanted to lead a great job in kind of running those interviews for, so, just to get him to. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a rubber stamp process. I mean, this was, there was discussion after each round and it was in depth and thorough and I, I mean, I think we've all come to the, the appropriate conclusion that we needed to come to with it. I mean, I think what we're, what we will do later will be, I think it will be good place.
Do you want to start, Don? When do you want to start?
I, hopefully Friday, that's the plan.
I mean, into the fiscal year's coming.
Yeah.
Got meetings, got a meeting with the autors Friday morning. So what a better time to hit the ground running than to deal with the autors out of the gate.
Lines run off of that.
Out of the gate, we're gonna find out if they wanna stay or not. But everybody had the ability to ask the candidate questions. I see no need to, I mean, I see no, I was originally gonna request a closed session to discuss, but I see no need for it. The rest of the council feels that they have the answers that they need, then we, I don't need one. Then we'll move to F, which is the big one of the night.
We don't have an ordinance number.
I don't either.
Just tell us, whatever the limit was, add that, this would be one more.
This is done, again, I, we all have to pay these rates. And I'm not overly thrilled about it, but we have to do what we have to do in order to keep the water and sewer revenue fund, at least paying its bills and not trying to build some type of reserve or issues. We were, we had a lot of expense last year in the, in the maintenance and repair of the utility system. We had budgeted $90,000 and we spent roughly $135,000 on repairing the system. So that, we don't, I mean, if we just raise for the flat increase we get from the Conservancy District, it leaves us nothing additional to fix our system that we have in place, and that becomes an issue. So I, in front of you, you have a copy of the ordinance that deals with our water rates. The ordinance in front of you reflects a 5% across the board water rate increase. It has nothing to do with sewer or the surcharge. It's just towards the water side. Again, we can't do anything on the sewer side without following the formula that is laid out in ordinance. So we're just on the sewer side, sewer, on the water side, sorry, sewer will remain the same. With this, and I don't know, last year when we did trash rates, we approved Resolution 202316, which established the rate schedule. So we're not, we don't have to vote on any of this, we voted on this last summer. But just as a quick update for those who do pay the minimum bill, the new minimum bill will be $59 even. That includes the trash rate increase, the 5% increase. Essentially, your minimum water is increasing at 4.98%. I had to drop a by penny to get it to an even number to alleviate a little bit of pressure out of the water.
It's not senior citizen now.
No, it's not, but that's just the standard regular.
What did you say a while ago that was causing us to break even or lose money because of all the maintenance that we're doing?
Well, well, we're broken leaks, you know, broken lines, we gotta, if you, if you're just, if we're just passing on the 2.8% increase we get from electricity water, we have nothing additional that goes into that fund.
My question is, how long are we gonna continue to do that year in, year out?
Corey, I can't agree with you more. I mean, I'm right there with you, because at some point it breaks. I think that was a conversation that I had with the mayor and with Craig and some others is, you know, after the trash increase, next, you know, with the next rate schedule, whenever, wherever I've got it, wherever I've just put it down at. But next year, I mean, our minimum water bill without, without touching the water portion will be $60. Now, that does include trash, and a third of that isn't trash. But at what point do we become unattractive to new business and new families? And I think we are sneaking up on that route. We already have a supply issue on the housing side, we make, I'm right there with you. I don't wanna pay this either, but what else can we do? And that's the thing with that water and sewer revenue fund. We can't pump money into it from a general fund. I mean, we had a, we struggled with, I mean, during the, I can't, was it the Delta Grant for sure? Like, we had to take out a line of credit to pay for it. And even that account, making the interest payment, waiting on the reimbursement, was a struggle at times.
What we're doing is passing this down to the next generation.
That's exactly right.
Worse.
That's exactly right.
If you look around at what's going on with construction costs, just in South Los Angeles, every day, article on paper is, the, the, the sewer plant is doubled in cost the last five years. They're very fortunate to get ours built.
Yes.
And water, water construction is gonna keep going up. And what we're doing in the city is passing this on to the next generation.
And, and I, again, I'm not upset in premise with the department for the amount of money we spent on the repairs and maintenance of the system. We have to do it.
Gotta fix it.
Gotta fix it. And the, the hope is, as we fix it and we do do updates, that we will recapture revenue and, and reduce water loss and reduce maintenance hours and time and overtime and all of that.
And that's not for the high school that we're getting ready to do, and not any day I think they're gonna tell us to go to B. So I think it's pretty well done, we're waiting on some paperwork, that will help tremendously.
Yes, I agree. And once we, and that's the thing, we're slated for some really big projects from IDOT for the next 10 years. For 2030, I think all five.
West Maine will be a, a great help.
East Maine?
East, East Maine, apart from the school.
But not, not just, not just that, but I mean, that, that, that's gonna be a large section.
Yes.
That's gonna be prepared, that we don't have to do when IDOT does their, does their project for 34.
Well, I think that's part of what this is, it's, and hope, the hope is that these are investments that down the road start to pay off in return. And then things we don't have to fix, things aren't leaking, things are, savings money.
Some along the line, we've gotta look at the big picture.
I absolutely agree.
And try to get some of these, like our, our, our main streets coming into South Maine, it's never been anything done on.
Right.
North Maine, we've done pretty well in North Maine. East Maine, we're gonna do part of it, West Maine is gonna get done because of IDOT. So we've got to look at the big picture down the road.
Absolutely, and, and that's, and, and that's what, that's the only slight little bit of solace I've got in, in recommending this, this increase is down the road, is, I mean, I mean, I, I hate, fees and taxes, they're the same thing. They really are, I, I don't like them, no one really enjoys going and paying their bills and getting their hard earned money. No one enjoys that, but I think this is the only way, because if not, this fund, this fund runs the risk of insolventcy.
Well, until the city event looks at this like a good investment.
Yes.
Just like our sewer plant, our sewer plant's good for thirty something years.
Yes.
We're, we're having a revenue in the city, we're state of the art, we're proud of it. But this council makes tough decisions back in the day to build a sewer plant.
Yes, they did.
A lot of worry when you do, the rate's been raised. And, and one day, we're gonna have to look at our water line, our water system and say the same thing.
And I think that's some of the conversation now, and West Maine's driving some of that. It's not, we're not piecemeal in West Maine. If I understand what you and I talked about, it's, we're gonna get to West Maine, but if we got a tech of West Maine, what about East? What about South? What about some of those others? So I think that is, one part of the bigger conversation, but it's kinda like, what's the elephant in the room, what's?
And that's, and that's one, one reprieve, I think, we're gonna get in that fund is, it's a capital, it's a capital street project. That's why we're moving our lines. If that project wasn't going to happen, we wouldn't touch those lines under West Maine. So we're allowed, we don't have to use water and sewer funds. If we had to use water and sewer funds for that project, this is screwed, it would never happen, never happen. I mean, it's the same thing as sewer plant, you're locked into it and hoping something gets forgiven.
I look at it the positive side, when they get done with that, and it'll, it'll be painful, what we're gonna do.
Absolutely.
We got a storm, major storm sewer problem down at DeCoyle Street, they're gonna fix. We've got, and when people get off their state, come in our community, they're gonna have a nice street. All you gotta do is go down the road here and see what's happening. So we've gotta work, get it, get it done, make a major investment, and get it done.
Yeah, it's, it's, and the, inside the budget, there's, you know, Craig and I talked, and he's got, and he may not even be able to do it this year, just the funds that may not be available, but he's wanting to do that sewer project from, I think, from Park Street.
Park, Park Street North.
Yes. Yep.
Well, they think they're gonna do it, and they're not gonna have any sewer.
Right, so then, a lot, this, the additional, the, the 2.2% on top of the increase we're getting from the Conservancy District is essentially going to help alleviate some of the costs in the maintenance and repair of the system. It's not going to fix at all, but it does allow that fund to at least stay solvent and keep its head above water until we can figure something out. I mean, recapturing some water loss is going to be a huge part of that, because if you can reduce your water loss and cut it in half, then your purchases are gonna go down, because we gotta, we gotta buy that water regardless of whether we sell it or not. So, and, so hopefully that will alleviate some of that, some of that issue. Again, like, I'm not, I'm sure I'm gonna get absolutely browbeat for this, but like, we have to.
I'm not gonna get browbeat.
Well, it depends on who you talk to, so.
If someone's watching.
My, my motion is to approve ordinance number 24.
After the.
Second. I'll second.
Uh, to increase the water rates 5% across the board.
I'll second.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
No.
Mayor Massersohn?
Yes.
Consistent.
I've had my.
You were no this time last year.
I've just, ever turned the water rates, sewer rates been running, I voted no, I'm not changing in this district.
Just get you in a new camber seat and start washing for it.
So with, with that, just real quick, the number from the bad debt that we wrote off last meeting or meeting before was $3,000, $3,454.46. So now going into the fiscal year, we have, we're carrying no bad debt, because we discharged all of that stuff last year, and then this is the close of the current fiscal year. So if that has been closed out, I'm done talking.
Alright, so the attorney events?
Mayor no events, but I would like to say thanks to all the employees that put that city, picked it together for the second year, all the work they did. I just want that to be known, that they did a great job again.
Yeah.
It was good.
That was it.
It was a fun event, so. Under public affairs and Marigard's updates, we jump back up to item seven E, and we've all heard the discussion, we've heard the feedback. And again, thank you to Chris, that was a, it wasn't a long, but it was a hard, deep, arduous journey. It started out with a whole bunch of applications, ended up with eight interviews, and then second round of three, and then even then, some deliberation and labor in deciding. And so due to a resignation due to retirement, we need to appoint a new treasurer. And I make the recommendation that we appoint John Doherty as our new treasurer for the city of that department.
I'll, I'll second that.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
We done well.
Commissioner Garvelia?
We did good.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Massersohn?
Yes. Under, I have no purchase orders that I can see, under item nine C, we have finally gotten some movement in the grant for Malkovich Park. So we cannot proceed with work, we can proceed with bids. So I'd like the council to give permission for us to get bids on demo to finish them. We're not doing any work, but the Ozilad Grant gave us permission to obtain bids, so I have to begin that process. So I think approval from the council will be able to take some bids for a while.
I like that motion.
I second that. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia? Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Massersohn?
Yes. Uh, nine D, at our strategic planning meeting, one of the things that I had brought up was talking about project management workflow, kinda looking at how do we follow track and play out all the different projects and activities we do in the city. And Brooke has started researching that for us, but I would like official approval from the council to move forward with something and bring that back to the council for a decision. So it's a motion approval of that.
I'll make that motion, second.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Massersohn?
Yes, and then item nine E, you'll see there discussion approval of participation with EDC. They're asking for a $2,500 level of sponsorship. And we went back and looked and researched, and the last time we found that we actually made them a donation was in 2022, as best we could find, is that correct? So we did not, was it 19, was it that far back? I'm saying pre-COVID. And so there, Brian is on the board for the EDC, I've been going to the EDC meetings, and part of that role is EDC's been like leading the city, and the city should be leading EDC. So Brian and I have been very intentional about reorchestrating and helping and equipping them. And so it's something for the city to support. I would like to make him, have a motion in the second on participation at the $2,500 level.
What, what will we pay that out of?
It's in the budget.
It is, and again, I should know this, and.
It's not, you don't have a billion, there's not really lines to look at.
But if it's got a line, I would know.
It's, uh, under, I mean, exploiting utility tax.
Okay. Of course, it's all the way down there. Yeah, there it is.
It was $2,500.
Yeah. Uh, we exploit older tax code seventy-three.
I'll make that motion, and it already been made.
I'll second.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvelia? Commissioner Cochran?
Yeah.
Commissioner Story? Mayor Massersohn?
Yes.
You used all of your pitch without my.
Okay, good. I'll come back next year. If they come back, we'll talk.
See you next month.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see. And that's all I have with Republican affairs. I got that one just in the nick of time, didn't I? Just slid it in the water. Any miscellaneous, that was good, any miscellaneous business? Old business? New business?
Couple things in new business, just up in council. The mayor, myself, Craig and Tom met with Public Works negotiators Friday morning, so we have begun active negotiations with the Public Works Union and EDC. And we have, we've started preliminary negotiations with the police department as well. So those are now, those are now moving, so they're active and the fun involved with those has begun. So I just, just wanted to update the council on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else in your new business? It's been a long time since I've been able to say this, matters from the public?
Mr. Carter? Oh, yes, there are. Tom Carter, because I'm supposed to be announced, I guess.
Well, you can stand at the podium, anybody.
You stand, or everybody's seeing you. Well, then I'd be behind you. No, no, I'm over here, Don, no, come on up here, sit down.
I can hear you good now, listening, I'm trying to say.
You sure you don't want me sitting in your seat? No, no. I can't. There. Okay, let's start it off here, for here, Brooke, I've got two for you.
Okay.
Malkovich Park, have you guys seen the drawings of the renovations?
For?
For?
Malkovich Park.
Yes.
Does it have adequate drainage this time, so it won't keep ending up?
It will, yes, yes. Yeah. We had to submit actual architectural style drawings. We included some renderings, so everything will be taken back down to actual sidewalk grade. It'll be sloped away down towards the street. And I mean, no curb knee walls around it and no official gazebo in it, so there's no hiding for security measures.
Okay, yeah, I know when I had it dug out, I thought you guys were gonna go on down.
We are.
Water seal that.
Well, she water sealed the first portion of it, but we barely just took it down for insurance purposes, so that insurance could resolve, but they need to resolve with her. So that's all we did at that point, but we knew we were gonna apply for a grant. Many money that we spent then, we don't get to recoup it. So we stopped what we were doing until the grant came through. Otherwise, it'd just be the city spending their own money. So we waited till the grant came through. But yeah, we're gonna go all the way down.
Well, the lines look good.
Yes.
Okay. And I would question your thought about thirty years on the sewer plant. Most sewer plants, twenty to twenty-five years, and they need renovations. Eight years of that's gone already, so you're looking more like at twelve, maybe seventeen years, and you're gonna have to start again, maybe your stuff out there. Motors don't last that long. Equipment don't last that long. The atmosphere is, is hard on all the electronics. So I would cut it thirty years in half. Or you're gonna get caught with your yard down. Plain and simple.
Okay.
Kathy.
Yes.
Our new public building and grounds and all that. In your job, have you been around and inspected all the buildings and all that down, owned by the city?
I haven't. At one point, I haven't recently been in the, the, um.
Do you do that on a monthly basis?
I will.
Well, I, I'm just using, for example, I, I run by the lagoon there this evening. They mowed it, but they didn't weed it, so had shrubs up there, and the needs have the riff rack sprayed, cause there's shrubs growing on the riff rack again. And that's just an example. And, uh, I know the ground storage, the fire department, the police department, all these buildings, city hall. Maybe not have a monthly report on them, so everybody will know that there's not a problem. We would know about it ahead of time. I got a question on the fire department, too. And there was no bids taken for that building to be bid, built out there?
That bid, that building was approved four years ago.
Yeah.
And it, right in the height of COVID. And it was, because it was their foreign fire fund, they didn't have to, correct?
Well.
We asked.
Yeah, but.
Did they do what they?
It's still, yeah. You're talking about tax money going to workers who don't pay tax. You know, if I was a construction worker around Benton, I would be kind of peeved over that. It, it doesn't look good. You may have the right to do it, but it looks bad.
I, I, I gotta agree with you. It does, but we had two contractors that didn't want to bid on it. They didn't want it. So we was, we had put this thing off for years and years. And Shane got a pretty good deal on it, and we, they went with it, you know, but their people voted on it.
But if we put out for bids and that was the only bid you got, then you can show the public that you tried.
Well, we, we did try, but they didn't, they didn't want it. They didn't wanna put a bid out. So we've been on, we've been trying to get this thing done forever. We should have done it like police said, before coal, price of lumber went.
Yeah.
We didn't have money.
Price of lumber, yeah.
We didn't have the, enough money to build it, and we didn't wanna come to the city and say, hey, can you fund this? Cause this is not the city. Now, it will be the city building, cause it's attached to the old building. It will be a city building, but it's not getting paid not a penny as of yet.
That was foreign fire.
Yeah, foreign fires, maybe they ever said.
I have had people ask me about that, so because they don't pay taxes, why are we paying our tax money, because we don't pay taxes?
I had the same thing, and the Yucan people come down and said, why, why did the Yucan build it? Nobody bid on it. We couldn't get nobody to bid on it. They didn't wanna mess with the small building. They wanted the bigger stuff. So, and they're local. The guys we was, wanted to come was a local, you know, contractor. But it's just too small, but you, and it's, like I said, the city really doesn't have nothing to do with it. But we agreed to do this years ago, in twenty.
It was August of twenty.
Yeah.
Looked it up when they started construction.
Yeah.
And I'm happy Mr. Case didn't raise sewer rates, cause I got on like song and dance again about that one point two million dollars that was given away. You keep raising water funds, even though they're the ones that took the one point two billion from the sewer. So, uh, Natalie. I've got, have some questions there. Apparently, through the grapevine and everything, they said the mayor's house was robbed.
We're not gonna discuss that tonight.
I know, but being how it was the mayor, people were curious, because you're our leader.
Yeah, we'll be more glad to have a conversation if you want to make an appointment, but this is not an appropriate time to have that conversation.
Well, being how you are the mayor, though, there's awful lot of speculation going on out there apparently. So I thought I would ask you, while we're being done.
That, that is my private life, and we'll have a conversation if you'd like at City Hall.
Okay, well, I don't need to know. Apparently, everybody else wants to know.
And everybody else can contact me at City Hall, and we'll have a conversation at City Hall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wherever that is, we're more than likely to have a conversation with them.
Okay.
So you're more than welcome to call me anytime, or whoever can call me anytime, and have a conversation with them.
Wait a minute. Let me get my phone now. Is that what you referred?
No, no, I mean, I, contact me at City Hall.
Okay. So were you heard?
I, I'm telling you, we can have a conversation at City Hall. I'm done talking about it. What's your next question?
I think that was this, maybe. I think so. I believe. That's it.
Okay.
I was saving you for last. I was trying to bide my time and.
But you already, you already knew the answer, but thank you. I said, you probably already knew the answer, but thank you.
Well, I usually do know the answer ahead of time.
Yeah. All right, we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Case.
Yes.
Commissioner Garvallia.
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran.
Yes.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so it's still in Harold's, I mean, it's all signed by the. So, when he signs it tomorrow morning? We'll get your copy up.
All right, I'll come get one after. That'd be a good time, I guess. I get it. I get a copy of that.